Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 17th, 2025 meeting of the North Bend City Council. Bring it to order. Can the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Jocelyn. Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Alan Gottelf.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tremolata.
Present.
All are present with the exception of Councilmember Jocelyn, Your Honor.
Thank you. We will note that. And can the clerk please lead us in the flag salute? Okay, good evening, everybody. The crowd is huge tonight. We love seeing you. Excuse me, people, and thank you online to all our folks who joined. Well, sometimes that does happen. It feels like it, at least this year. Before I jump into the consent agenda, I do want to note that the item number six on the consent agenda, AB 25-067, is going to be pulled for tonight's consent agenda, and we will bring that back in the near future, however.
No move, the amended consent agenda removing item number six, AB 25-067.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gottelf and seconded by right next door, Christina Rustic. Thank you very much. Anybody take a vote for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're just moving it off, bringing it back when it's...
Okay.
Not ready for showtime.
So are you open here, Ben?
Yes, that would extend.
Okay, so we have a full round. That would be 6-0 currently. So if it does pass, thank you, everybody. We will now move on to our consent agenda. We have six items on our... Whoops, five. Excuse me, their consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
No moved.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gottelf and seconded by Heather Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and use unanimous at 6-0. Let's see, before we move on to audience participation as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you are attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off, mail, fax, or email to clerks@northbendwa.gov by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. We are no longer taking public comments for those who are remotely attending via Zoom unless they have reached out to our city clerk in advance of the meeting to request accommodation. We will now move on to audience participation since we will no longer be taking public comment. After every item on the main agenda, now would be the time to come forward to the podium to comment on agenda items or any other item you wish to speak about. If you're here to speak with regard to AB 25-068, Resolution Adopting Six-Year TIP 2000... or 2002-0626 2031. Lots of numbers tonight. Please hold your comments until the public hearing later this evening. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak through the virtual platform, please raise your hand through the virtual platform. We'll take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Woo! I wanted to be quick for you. You want to keep your waiting. You were ready to go.
My name is Deborah Landers. I'm at 14615438th Avenue Southeast in North Bend, and I'm here for a couple of reasons. I'm going to talk really, really fast. Takaka Wright, who is a Snoqualmie Tribe member, was unable to join me tonight, but she wanted to make sure that you are all invited to the National Day of Prayer for the Protection of Native Americans Sacred Places. And if you haven't been to this ceremony, it is awe-inspiring and such a lovely ceremony. It's on Friday. It's a sunrise ceremony, so the gates at the Lower Falls opens at 5:00 a.m. They begin the ceremony at 5:30, and it really is this meaningful, incredibly... It's just a lovely ceremony. And for me, it really helped me to start to understand some of the cultural norms for our Snoqualmie Tribe. So I really highly, highly recommend you join me at 5:00 a.m. It'll be fun. And it's only once a year at 5:00 a.m., so there you go. Okay, besides that, I wanted to let you know that the Center for Creativity is... just has so many offerings right now. So if you haven't been on our website, please do. We have a slew of diverse classes and workshops and activities happening, including a couple new ones that are a little bit more toward the technology thing. So we're doing VR painting, which is bizarre and fun, and there's no mess, and you can step into someone else's VR art studio and comment or point at things that they're doing. It's really very cool. But the thing that's going to be very popular is VR Minecraft. We have two versions. One that's for the little ones. It's a protected version, so they're not getting killed or their... I don't even know what it is. Their places aren't being broken. And then we have the more adult version that goes into survivor mode that most people know about. So again, check out the website. Lots of really cool offerings. And then, yes, it's Art Off the Rails on Saturday, and I really hope to see you all there. 10 to 4, over 50 artists, two really fun food trucks. We've got Off the Res with Native American food and Tolu, which is Fijian fusion. We've got three amazing bands with the Cheyenne Leonard Trio, if you don't know them, all originals, with a couple of cool covers, but a very talented young group. And then we have the East Side Saxophone Quartet for a little variation, and then we wrap up with one of my favorites, which is our local band Ask Sophie. So all very cool, as well as a lot of activities, some additional guest organizations that we've invited to help us celebrate art in our town. And those are... Snow Valley Pride is going to have a booth, and we'll have an art project, and the March of the Veggies from Duval is coming, and they'll have an art project. So both those groups are really fun, and they have some really fun art projects to share in the celebration. That's all I have, except, hey, new shirt! New shirt! Designed by Josh Tininga at the Medium, who's now on our board. That's all I have. Thank you so much. I'll see you Saturday.
Thank you, Deb. Can't capture your energy enough, I think. Do you have anyone online, Phil?
Not at this time.
Hey. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. We're going to march on to commissioning committee reports, then. Brendan, I'm going to start with you. You've been very patient online. Thank you for joining us tonight, and take it away, please.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to one of my colleagues who's there live.
Sorry, that'd be Heather. Let's go with Heather. Can you handle...
Yes.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thanks, Brendan. So we had a meeting today at 4:00 p.m. here in City Hall, and we discussed a lot of things that I didn't bring with me. But mostly, we talked about possibly a development or a DA for a potential apartment.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. Susan, help me out. Exit 31 Subarea Plan, a proposal to undertake a subarea plan for Exit 31 in North Bend to support fiscal sustainability, establish a gateway to downtown North Bend, and increase bike and pedestrian connectivity to downtown. We next talked about Evolve, a mixed-use development, and that was about a multifamily residential development. That would have been on the old Pong property, which was supposed to be our Marriott Hotel. We next talked about an annexation petition by Craig Glazier, and we talked... We deferred to community survey until Brendan gets back from his travels. Number five on the agenda is cycling interactive map and an outdoor brand. It's pretty cool, you guys. There's postcards, and you'll be able to interact with the trails of our area, and it will help get you to restaurants in our area, and it's pretty interesting in a website. And number six, we just talked about the retail trade show that James, our Economic Development, went to trying to get us businesses that fit our brand in North Bend, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Alan, Finance Administration, please.
All right, Finance Administration met June 10th at 4:00 p.m. at the City Adjournment Room. We discussed something we'll be talking about tonight, the City Administrator Search Update we had. We looked at, I think, the credit card. That's on the... It was on the consent, the credit card use policy, made some revisions that we asked for and brought forward and put it on consent. And then just general updates. FNA work planned for six-month check-in, revenue collections trending, and just had a... Just a committee discussion about revenues and where we're at, and that was it.
Perfect. Would you like to do East Side Fire and Rescue...
Sure.
...have it captured there?
Well, perfect. I'm right up there, right there. So East Side Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met June 12, 2025, at headquarters in Newport. We did a... We discussed the profile and reviewed the profile for the fire chief candidate. So we've got a now-profile if anybody's interested in. That's what the profile kind of looks like. We discussed establishing an employee benefit liability fund, which was more of a housekeeping item that needed to be done to separate those things. And then we discussed public records fee structure, and then public records custodian assignment. So we had to let... We had to name somebody who was going to be the custodian of assignment. Then the... In the chief's briefing, he talked about the deputy chief recruitment. Finalist has been selected and is currently undergoing background, psychology, chess, and medical screening. If all goes well, he'll be introduced at our July 10th board meeting. As spring has hit headquarters, they took some time to clean up the headquarters and did some spring cleaning. There was discussion about the support for the Canada wildfires. I don't know if you guys have heard all about that, but we do have a battalion chief. Merritt has been deployed to support suppression efforts in Alberta, Canada, under the Northwest Compact. He departed on June 2nd and is assigned to a division supervisor position on the Northwest. His incident management team supporting operations at Tulip Lake Fire near Fort Smith. The deployment was expected to last about 14 days. Then there was a... EFER hosted a King County Fire Chiefs Association wildfire event, was a training at the Wildland Training Exercise Camp in North Bend. The goal was to raise public awareness about wildfire evacuation procedures and readiness in the event of wildfire or other hazardous situations. King County Office of Emergency participated, highlighted, and other community members were there with the ready, set, go, and there was some coverage by Fox News and Como News and Como Radio. Also, EFER has secured a $29,000 grant through the Department of Natural Resources, led by our wild mitigation specialists. This project runs through the end of June 2025 and supports targeted wildfire reduction in our service area. The grant from DNR recognized recognition of EFER's regional leadership and capacity to deliver mitigation services across the jurisdictions. The key deliverables are some that we've talked about, the home risk assessments that are done at individual homes, community assessments, spotter, neighborhood evaluations to assess collective wildfires, public education, and a 1.2 mind shed fuel break to improve evacuation and firefighter access by thinning 20 feet on either side of a key ingress or egress. This work will be done within District 38, which is within the North Bend area, and completed by Black Star. So it'll be helpful to us. Wildfire community engagement invitations. They are going to do a wildfire movie and discussion panel. The first one will be Monday, June 23rd at 6:30, and it will be... The location still hasn't been determined yet, but that will be hosted by the City of Isiqua. And the panel members are going to be Isiqua's emergency manager, East Side Fire and Rescue firefighter, who is deployed to LA, is going to be moderating a panel. Then there's going to be one here, June 25th, starts at 6:30. It'll be at the North Bend Theater, co-hosted by the city, and the panel will be... On the panel will be the East Side Fire and Rescue person who was deployed to Los Angeles. That'll be a fun discussion to hear. We also got discussed and pictures of our new wild... New brush trucks that have been delivered to us. Regional training, ecology resolution. So East Side Fire Rescue and the City of Isiqua received notification for ecology that our collective efforts during the formal dispute resolution with the Department of Ecology was successful. And what this was, was they were trying to add additional sites that we would have to test for PFAS, and the Department of Ecology sided with us and thought we had enough testings. North Bend, we talked about how great North Bend was and that we standardized on the fire fee, and we're the first partner to ratify it and get it moving forward. So got a lot of kudos to us. And then there was a discussion about... With bond council about District 10 taking on the bond for the trucks, additional fire trucks that we need that we want to lease. And then just talked about Mark Lawrence, who graduated from the Seattle Fire UW Foster School of Business. And then there's going to be a recruit graduation on July 1st at the River of Life Fellowship, Recruit Class 20, and we've got several members. So if you're interested, let me know. I've got invitations for them. And that's all.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I make note that Mark Jocelyn, Councilmember Jocelyn, joined the meeting at 7:08?
I'm glad you did that. Thank you very much. I noticed it myself. Welcome, Mark. I'm actually... I'm going to say, Mark, would you like to take it away and do a work study for us, if you're able to?
I am sorry. I am not prepared to report out on your study. I'm trying to call up my internet connection.
Christina's ready.
Thank you.
You're... Oh, you're welcome, of course. Christina?
Yes, I'll go ahead and thank you for that. No problem. We had City Council work study on May 27th in City Hall here, and we covered the fiscal sustainability, downtown retail, and city branding. We also talked about the ordinance amending residential impact fees and discussion about the interim city administrator contract extension. That was it.
Excellent. And while I have you there, would you like to continue on with public health and safety?
Yes, thank you. Public Health and Safety Committee met on June 3rd here in the adjournment room, where we had a fire update, much of what was covered by Councilmember Gottelf, so I won't reiterate that. We had a... Most of the agenda was related to police topics, police update, including documented... Document provided to all of us with major incidents and current projects. The interim acting chief mentioned that Officer Hoila and Officer Westman, apologize if I got the name wrong, received formal recommendation from the Washington State Patrol for their professionalism and dedication in a recent agency assist. And Officer Bostwick received a written recommendation... Commendation. I am not having a good... From a citizen who witnessed him assisting an individual in a mental health crisis. So that was a very positive conversation. We did move on to some of the conversation we've been having at every month's Public Health and Safety, and that was associated with the e-bikes in the city. Acting Chief Horesey has been talking to the prosecutor's office in King County about options, different options that we can work on. Definitely was a recommendation that, and I think we all agree, Snoqualmie and North Bend should create similar ordinances so that we can be consistent in our approach. And then, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, recommendation that residents contact the King County Council, representatives, and regional committees about this matter because they're having similar problems all across the region, and our ordinances just are not up to date with some of the challenges that we're seeing. So... We also had a conversation about lowering the speed limits on North Bend Way and agreed that we would have a speed study take place and then come back to see what recommendations might be needed as a result. And that was it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Cullen, Transportation and Public Works, please.
Sure. TPW last met on May 27th at 4:00 o'clock here in City Hall. The first item was an update on the Salal entry and Salal booster station projects and Amendment Number One to agreement with Salal to mutually extend completion date to September 30th, and that is on our agenda tonight. Secondly, we talked about a motion approving a blanket purchase order with Core and Main for water meter replacement supplies, also on tonight's meeting. Thirdly, there was a resolution authorizing Merritt to purchase a portion of property located at 202 Thrasher Avenue for construction of a part of the 2025 Sidewalk Gaps Project. As usual, a full agenda. We carried on to talk about a resolution awarding construction contract to Fury Site Works for the 2025 sidewalks project transportation. Fifth, we discussed of the 2026 sidewalk gap projects. This... If this list is acceptable to TPW, then staff will obtain an engineering design proposal and bring a design contract to TPW Committee relater in 2025. Second review of the city's 2026-2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan was discussed, and a discussion on McClellan Street Improvements Project Concept Ideas. I'm not done yet. There was a discussion regarding Panatoni's request for city to vacate public right-of-way. It's a private development. And there was a discussion on Meadowbrook Ulid Number Seven, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that very full report. James, can we have some information about planning parks? Can I have a development, please?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The Planning Commission met on May 21st and held a public hearing and provided a recommendation of approval on draft amendments to the city's Form-Based Code addressing legislative requirements from HB 1293 concerning limitations on design standards. The Planning Commission will next meet tomorrow evening, June 18th, and will hold a public hearing and make a possible recommendation of approval on amendments to the water regulations in North Bend Municipal Code 13.08 and the sewer regulations in the same code, in Code 13.20, concerning accessory dwelling units. These amendments propose to require a separate water meter and water and sewer connection for detached ADUs. Detached ADUs may now be sold separate from the principal dwelling consistent with state law. The Parks Commission met jointly with the Economic Development Commission on May 28th and conducted a bicycle tour around the city to generate ideas for possible projects and improvements to facilitate bicycling as part of the bicycle mobility plan. The Parks Commission also reviewed and provided a recommendation of approval on a final draft shoreline access plan. The Parks Commission will not meet in June, but will next meet on July 23rd and will discuss possible project ideas for use of the annual small park improvement budget and ideas for a seasonal pop-up dog park at Dogren Family Park. And finally, the Economic Development Commission met on May 22nd and discussed project ideas for the Port of Seattle Partnership Grant, which is due in August. In addition, they received a briefing from Craig Glazier about his proposed improvements to Sunset Garage, the former Antique Mall, and Volition Brewing. The Commission will next meet on June 26th to discuss an arts and culture proposal from Commissioner Beth Burrows to promote the creative arts in North Bend.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Counsel, do you have any regional committee reports you'd like to speak to? Okay, we'll start with Susan.
I've got two. So let's start with... Well, let's start with the PIC Committee. I just did that on June 11. And basically, let me find the notes on that one. Got too many different things for notes. Basically, we went over several items. We met on June 11th at 7:00 p.m. I subbed for Errol. He had family obligations. And first, they went over regional board and committee updates. Staff provided that. Then we talked about House Bill 215 and new criminal justice sales tax discussion. They gave us more details about that. Actually, that was most of the meeting, was that particular topic. And then we talked about potential items in the future. And then AJ Foltz is going to be our new policy analyst as Andy is moving... She's already moved to Texas. So that was the PIC meeting. And then the Regional Safety and Law and Justice. I get it wrong every time. Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. We also talked about a lot of different legislative that passed in this recent session, and we did a lot of conversation about the 2015 bill, which passed, and what it's doing is creating an opportunity for cities and counties to get grants, and it's also creating an opportunity for cities and counties to impose a sales tax without voters, a 0.1%, but it's focused on criminal justice, but there's a lot of rules in place, and time will tell if we'll be able to apply for that. So that's about it.
Thank you, Susan. I don't believe...
I do have one more thing.
Take it away. You bet.
So Snow Valley Chamber, they have... I'm the liaison for them. They have Innovation Fridays at noon, and they just reorganized it, and they're doing something new every Friday. So that's for starting or growing your business. And then on June 19th, Snoqualmie Valley, they have their Business Connect from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at the Chamber. And one of the big things she's working on right now is tourism, and that's it for Snoqualmie Valley Chamber.
Excellent. Thanks so much. And I don't know if... But I'm going to give this airspace. Okay, let's move on to our main agenda. How exciting. Item number seven, AB 25-068, public hearing continued and resolution adopting Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan 2026 to 2031. Mr. Regos, would you like to provide the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Page 35 in your packet. This is a six-year TIP. This is our annual endeavor that we do every year. It's a requirement of the state of Washington to provide this and approve the six-year TIP. There were meetings on the TIP at our April and May Transportation and Public Works Committee meetings, and we also, the second council meeting in May, had a public hearing on... Opened the public hearing at a city council meeting. In your packet, you will see on page 41, we have a list of projects. On page 43, we have a project narrative of all the projects. And then we have a nice TIP map, and it's on 11-inch by 17-inch, a color map of all of our Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan projects coming up in the next six years. The total cost of these projects is $68.6 million over the next six years, so we're investing about $10 million per year in our transportation grid, which is just great. If you look in page 36 of your agenda, of your city council agenda packet, you'll see that we've completed 30 transportation capital projects since 2016, so we're averaging about four or five per year. Why do we do the six-year TIP? I'll tell you real quick. Here, there's several benefits. The TIP is a management tool for city council and city staff. Also, it provides valuable information to committees, commissions, citizens, developers, and businesses interested in the development of a city. Third, it assists in leveraging available resources through improved timing of projects and improved coordination of city projects with those of private and other public entities. Fourth, it helps to protect a city's current infrastructure and to plan for new infrastructure. And fifth, also super important, is many grant sources require that projects be adopted in the city's six-year TIP prior to grant application. So we're ready to move forward with this great list of projects that we have, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mark. Counsel, do you have any clarifying questions from Mr. Regos? Nope. Okay, let's see. We'll now move on to the public hearing. Public hearing on the six-year TIP was opened on May 20th, city council meeting, and continued to tonight's meeting. If any members of the audience would like to comment during the public hearing, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we'll reach out to you after in-person comments. Let's see. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Do we have anybody? No? Okay. All right. Well, that was quick. I will now close the public hearing on the six-year TIP. Okay, Councilmember Cullen, will you please make the motion?
Motion to approve AB 25-068, a resolution adopting the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan 2026 through 2031 as a final reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Susan? Okay, seconded by... Okay, motion made by Councilmember Cullen and seconded by Susan Torgerson. Councilmember Cullen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think this is one of my favorite things that we do. I love seeing all the projects that have been completed, all the projects we're looking forward to doing, and it's just a really great thing that we do for our city.
Awesome. Susan, would you like to add anything?
Sure. Sure. Public Works always does a great job, and so it's always good to hear the projects they're doing. So, looking forward to seeing them completed.
Fantastic. Anybody on council wish to add anything? Okay, Errol?
Yeah, I'll just add also, I think we've done a really good job over, I'd say, the last couple of years of communicating progress on the projects, specifically to you, and just encourage, encourage to do that as these new projects come up. People love hearing updates and seeing kind of how far things are coming. So, yeah, agree with everybody. It's the most exciting part of what we get to do.
Wonderful. Anybody else? One more moment. Any line, Brendan? Mark? Nothing? Okay, all good. The motion before us is to approve AB 25-068, a resolution adopting the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan 2026 to 2031 as a final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody that is fully in favor. It's seven to zero. Thank you for all that. So, moving on to item number eight, AB 25-069, motion confirming appointment of city administrator. I am pleased to present Ms. Amber Emery tonight to counsel for confirmation of her appointment as city administrator of City of North Bend. We welcome you with open arms. Ms. Emery is an experienced and professional leader who has served in the private and public sectors for the past 17 years. She has devoted the last 11 years to public service in Washington and Oregon. She has served as the Criminal Court Operations Manager and the Court Executive Officer in Vancouver, Washington, and is currently the Deputy County Manager for Clark County, Washington. She holds a Master of Advanced Study in Criminology, Law, and Society from the University of California, Irvine, and a Bachelor's Degree in Social Sciences, Criminal Justice, and Sociology from Washington State University, Vancouver. She is a member of the International City County Management Association and the League of Women in Government, consistent with North Bend's Municipal Code 2.06.010. The appointment of the city administrator is subject to confirmation by a majority of the city council. At this time, I request confirmation of Ms. Emery's appointment as city administrator. Ms. Emery's start date will be July 21st, 2025. Counsel member Jocelyn, would you, Mark, would you like to make this motion online? Are you comfortable with that?
I so move.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for that. Loud and strong. I love it. And do we have a second? Was that Alan? Okay. Motion by Mr. Protem, Mark, and second by Mr. Gottelf. Mark, would you like to say anything?
Yes. Well, I first want to acknowledge staff and all their efforts, and Aaron DeBerg in particular, for running a process that was transparent, thorough, and involved, you know, multiple members of the community and council, and I'm very pleased. I am supportive of the outcome and will certainly be voting in favor of Ms. Emery's appointment, and I look forward very much to working with her going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. And Alan, would you like to add anything?
Just-
All the hard work he did, staff did, to be able to get us a bunch of candidates to come down to this, which are the big candidates, so that's, we'll move on.
Fantastic. I love it. And Amber, welcome again. And there you are at the podium. If you'd like to introduce yourself a little bit more, whatever you need to tell us.
Absolutely. Good evening to the North Bend residents, and thank you so much to Mayor and Council for, I'm truly honored to join this community and help lead this organization. And special thanks, too, to the esteemed executive group that we have here. That is a big part of the reason why all of you, as well as the esteemed group that we have here, that I decided to join this organization. We have a very, very stellar group of folks here, and we're doing a lot of great things, and I can't wait to join the team. So, thank you to all of you, and I look forward to joining the team.
Thank you, Amber. If you hold on for just a moment. If you have any questions from council for Amber tonight?
Sure.
Chris?
I just wanted to say congratulations. I, myself, have never seen such a rigorous interview process, and you came through very well and were, you know, kudos to you for that. So, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anybody else from council? Oh, okay. Heather first, and then Susan, please.
Just want to say congratulations. We're very excited to have you and welcome to North Bend.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Anne, Susan.
Yeah, welcome to North Bend. I'm super excited that you're here and look forward to getting to know you better.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. All right. Well, we're gonna take a picture. Would you take me up there? Okay. Action. Sorry. I'm so excited. I just want to get right to it. Okay. I'm so happy. Counsel, the motion before you is to approve AB 25-069, confirming the Mary Miller's appointment of Amber Emery as city administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes favorably seven to zero. Welcome.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna run up there. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, everybody. Item, oh, item number nine is, of course, AB 25, where are we? Number, number nine. Excuse me. Oh, AB 9 dash, AB 25-070, motion authorizing city administrator employment contract, Ms. Escobar. Now is your time to fill us in on the blanks.
Yes. Well, now that you have been confirmed, we can solidify it with an employment agreement.
Those terms key details.
Basically, just clarifies the terms and agreements for, and conditions of employment with the City of North Bend, and it is the same template that all upper-level management has and was approved by council last year. And so, we look forward to getting your signature on that employee agreement and officially welcoming you into our community. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Do you have any clarifying questions from council? Lisa? No? Counsel member Gottelf, would you please make the motion?
Yeah, I think it's the most important part of the motion for her tonight, I would think, but motion to approve AB 25-070, authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an employment agreement with Amber Emery in the form approved by the city attorney.
Second? Okay, motion by Mr. Gottelf, and second by Ms. Torgerson. Mr. Gottelf, would you like to comment on your motion?
Well, I think since we confirmed her, we should allow her to get, sign her employment agreement. So, I think this is pretty standard and housekeeping at this point.
Okay, very good. Ms. Torgerson, would you like to add anything?
Ditto.
Short and sweet. I love it. Okay, anybody else from council have any questions or any, anything? Online? No? All right, the motion before us is to approve AB dash, or 25-070, authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an employment agreement with Amber Emery in a form approved by the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, one and all, again. Item number 10, AB 25-071, ordinance amending NBMC Chapter 18.34 regarding design standards. Ms. Hepworth, would you be kind enough to provide that staff report for us tonight?
Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight to present AB 25-071, which amends North Bend Municipal Code, Chapter 18.34, relating to the design review standards, and in addition, amends the commercial mixed-use industrial design standards and guidelines to meet ESHB 1293. This state bill requires local governments impose design review and design standards that streamline the process and require specific objective design standards for architectural design. That includes, you know, removing anything that's unclear, vague, or confusing. We presented this initially at the last meeting on June 3rd, and it was tabled until today for additional time for council members to review it. I am here today to answer any final questions before hopefully you take a vote.
All right. Thank you. Any clarifying questions for Caitlin? Counsel? No. No? Okay, let's see. Counsel member, well, Heather Cullen, I think you're reading this one for Brendan. Am I correct? Thank you.
The motion to approve AB 25-071, an ordinance amending NBMC Chapter 18.34 relating to design review standards and guidelines, and commercial mixed-use industrial design standards and guidelines as a first and final reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gottelf. Motion by Counsel member Cullen, and second by Mr. Gottelf. Ms. Cullen, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think it's given, and streamlining the process to help everybody out is a good process.
Excellent. Mr. Gottelf, do you have any comments to make?
Nothing to add tonight.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from council have, wish to make a comment?
I will.
Susan?
Basically, this is for the audience and for the community, this is a statewide declaration that we need to follow their rules. So, that's what we're doing.
Great. Thank you very much. The motion before us is to approve AB 25-071, an ordinance amending NBMC Chapter 18.34 relating to design review standards and guidelines and commercial slash mixed-use slash industrial design standards and guidelines as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you again, everybody. Item number 11, AB 25-072, ordinance amending Form-Based Code. Ms. Hepworth, back to you to provide the staff report.
Well, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I'm about to be very, very repetitive, so I'll keep it short and sweet.
That's okay.
Tonight, I am presenting AB 25-072, amending the North Bend Form-Based Code in accordance with ESHB 1293, which requires design review and standards to streamline the permit process and require specific objective design standards for architectural review. Again, that includes, you know, clarifying anything that's unclear, removing vague standards and confusing language. This was originally presented at the June 3rd, 2025, regular council meeting, and tonight I am here for a second and hopefully final reading and your vote.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any clarifying questions for Caitlin here? No? Okay, I think, Mr. Tremolata, will you please make the motion? Oh, so Heather, excuse me. Back to you.
Next to you.
Oh, next to you. Excuse me. Okay, you're busy tonight.
Motion to approve AB 25-072, an ordinance amending the North Bend Form-Based Code Regulating Plan as a first and final reading.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Heather Cullen, and second by Christina Rustic. Heather, would you like to comment at all?
I love the word streamline. Streamlining the permit process and making clear language, that sounds like a winner to me.
Beautiful. And Christina, do you have anything you'd like to comment?
I just want to, I know that you had to repeat yourself a couple of times there, but I really appreciated the extra time. While this may be something that we're required to do, I think it does have an impact on what we see in the city, and so having the council be able to thoroughly understand the changes is important. So, thank you for giving us the extra time. That's all.
Great. Any other additional council comments to make?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yep. Okay, Mark, you're on.
I simply, again, want to acknowledge staff. This is a huge lift. I did have the honor, you know, I sat in on the Planning Commission meeting in early May. I also, so I want to acknowledge those folks who put in countless hours, read essentially every word of this very hefty, both of the past two motions. I want to call out Mike McCarty, in particular, for shepherding this process. Keep, as Counsel member Torgerson noted, this is largely driven by a need to track changes at the state level, and it's not easy. It's a moving target. It moves out in front of us, and absent the guidance, insight, and knowledge of the staff, we would kind of be lost in this morass of changing codes. I think it is a benefit to the city. I am very supportive, but absent their hard work and that of the Planning Commission, we would, you know, I just, again, want to acknowledge all that good work and effort that went before us to get it to this, get us to this point such that we can, in fact, move forward with the next motion that's coming after this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else from council wish to have a comment? Nope. Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 25-072, an ordinance amending the North Bend Form-Based Code Regulating Plan as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion does pass unanimously. Thank you again, everybody. Item number 12, AB 25-073, resolution acknowledging completion of the 2024 periodic update. Mr. McCarty, would you like to provide us the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council.
You.
So, if I weren't trying to pay attention to decorum, I would get up on this table and dance right now. So, I want to say a huge thank you to the council, to our Planning Commission, to our staff, and as Council member Jocelyn noted, this was a huge lift. So, this started back in 2022, and the story of our comprehensive plan came to a climax back in December with the adoption of the comp plan by the council. But with that, we weren't yet done because there's also associated development regulations that we had to amend to comply with state legislation pertaining to accessory dwelling units, impact fees, design standards in our Form-Based Code. And with the last two actions, we are done with that process. So, the resolution before you simply ties that all up so that we can package it and send it to Department of Commerce and acknowledge that we are complete.
How exciting is that? Yeah. Any questions for Mark, for Mike? No? Okay, no, let's see. I think, is that you, Errol? Okay. Counsel member Tremolata, I think you're gonna make the motion on this. Thank you.
Motion to approve AB 25-073, a resolution acknowledging completion of the 2024 periodic update, consistent with Washington, with Washington State Growth Management Act.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Alan? Okay, motion, motion by Mr. Tremolata, and second by Mr. Gottelf. Errol, would you like to comment on your motion?
Yeah, just to echo some of the comments already, incredibly heavy lift, I think, as well. Incredibly excited to play a small role in this. I think the city as a whole through this process has really turned the page for the future of North Bend and set up a path to not only sustain the current mountain town that we enjoy and want, but also allow ourselves to move a bit towards the future for the needs of our growing community. So, incredibly happy to participate and to see this through.
Wonderful. Mr. Gottelf, do you have any comments to say?
No, I just encourage, same thing everybody says, staff did a great job. Mike did a great job, and this is a heavy lift. This is not something, you know, that we take lightly, or I think the staff took lightly. And I know that we kind of pushed this off a little because we had some questions, and they came back and gave us clarifying stuff for it. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else from council wish to comment? In line? No? Okay, and motion before us is to approve AB 25-073, a resolution acknowledging completion of the 2024 periodic update, consistent with Washington State Growth Management Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you, everybody. That's super exciting. Item 13, AB 25-074, motion authorizing first amendment of Salau Water Supply Agreement. Mr. Regos, would you update us on that report, please?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Page 297 in your packet. This is the, this is about the water supply agreement between the City of North Bend and Salau Water Association. If you recall, back in June 6th of 2023, that's when we had the water supply agreement signed. This would be amendment number one. There are two inner ties being constructed as part of this water supply agreement. First is the Boxley Creek Inner Tie. That's up in the watershed up near Rattlesnake Lake, and that is about 98% constructed, and that will be done either this week or next week. The second project is more complicated and costs quite a bit more, and that's called the North Bend Way Inner Tie, and that is for sharing of domestic water. So, the Boxley Creek Inner Tie is for mitigation water, and the North Bend Way Inner Tie is for mitigation water. There was a slight delay in Salau's schedule to complete their project. There were some minor delays for electrical items, for the motor control center, control panels, power panels, and various sensors. So, what we're hearing from Salau is they will be done substantially complete with their construction project on roughly August 7th. The purpose of this agenda bill is to extend the date for the water supply agreement from June 30th, 2024. from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This was discussed at the last Transportation and Public Works Committee meeting and was recommended for approval. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Regos. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Regos, council? Mark, Alan, excuse me.
You said the completion date was what? Because this seems to have some different date. Was that what, because it says ten, three, twenty-five, and you said September first.
There's a substantial completion of August seventh in that table, and there's a physical completion of October third. So the difference between those two is usually there's minor punch list items that can take place for those month or two, and that's what we're hearing from Salau. So it's, it's minor items. At, at August seventh, they should be able to share water with us.
Okay, so besides that clarification, then the other question I have is, and you do make a statement here, so I think it's, it won't affect our mitigation timing and stuff like that. Will we still be able to use this for mitigation? Are we still substantially with Seattle going this year?
Normally, we start heavily mitigating water in late July, August. And that continues August, September, October, as the snowpack has, there's no more snowpack in the mountains. The rivers are lower, right? But we're still pumping water out of Centennial Well. We're not able to pull water out of Mount Si Springs anymore. So we won't be able to pull water from Salau until their project is substantially complete, which they anticipate is August seventh.
Okay, so it's clarified, it'll be the same as last year, how we mitigate it then?
Possibly. The were, the snowpack this year is a little bit less than last year at this point. It's actually quite a bit less. So we'll probably be mitigating a little bit earlier this year. So I would suspect we will be mitigating in July, but it all depends also on rainfall. If we get a wet June and July, then all of a sudden that charges up Mount Si Springs, and then we don't need to mitigate again for a while. So it's really based on climate, weather, et cetera.
Thank you.
Chris?
So following on to that train of thought, there is a potential, depending on the weather, that there could be an additional cost to the city of North Bend that we did not anticipate because of this delay?
That's, that's correct. If there is not any rain or in June or July and August, and we're not able to pull water from Mount Si Springs, okay, then we have to pull water from Hobo Springs. And every drop of water we pull from Hobo Springs costs the city money. We pay Seattle Public Utilities for that water. So the, the goal here is, is to not pay as much money to Seattle Public Utilities and use the Salau wells. So if those don't come online until later, we may have to pay Seattle Public Utilities more. The biggest concern is us having access to a secondary mitigation supply, which I'm confident we will have, because this will be done, this is supposed to be done here by August. But the concern of not having that second mitigation source, I'm, I don't get concerned about that until August, October first, October fifteenth, or November first. If we have a really dry fall, that's when I get concerned that Hobo Springs might dry up, and then we don't have that mitigation.
May I ask a follow-up? You sure can. Thank you. So this, this, approving this, we don't have any concerns, but should it, for unknown reasons, slide again, at what point, I guess, does the council need to reconsider possible other solutions? Like, kind of what's the date where we should start being worried?
I would say, you know, September thirtieth is, is, is getting on the edge. Could be August thirtieth, could be September fifteenth, really depends on the weather. So if we don't get any rain in July and August, then I'm more concerned about this. We have a red, wet summer, then I'm less concerned about this. All depends on the weather.
Thank you. Errol?
What happens if we don't sign the amendment?
Then they would, I assume they would continue to do their projects. Salau would not stop. It's in their best interest to continue the project. It's in the city's best interest to continue our construction project. And both sides would just get done as fast as we can. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a legal answer to this. You know, I suppose it could be breach of contract, but if there's no damages, then there's no damages. So.
Well, parlaying off what councilmember Rustic just said, right? If we have to go to Hobo Springs early, is that considered damages? So I guess that's a legal question, can you?
It tends, councilmember, I'm happy to engage in further discussion, but that might be a topic for executive session. But generally, as we're talking about it, there is a contract. If one party, such as Salau, doesn't meet the requirements in the contract, that could be seen as a breach. And then we get into, are there damages? That's usually contested, so an argument on, on either side. But if we want to talk specifics, I would invite an executive session.
Thank you. Anybody else from council, any questions? Any online? Okay, councilmember Colan, will you please make the motion? Or Errol? Are we switching?
Sorry.
Sorry, Errol.
Motion to approve AB twenty-five zero seven four, authorizing amendment one to the agreement for the wholesale supply of water with Salau Water Association.
Second. Thank you. Motion made by Tremolata, Mr. Tremolata, and seconded by Ms. Heather Colan. Mr. Tremolata, would you like to comment on your motion?
Yeah. Even in contrary to my question I just asked, it seems, I've been asking for updates for quite some time, and Mr. Regos has, has kept the updates as best he can. And it certainly seems like Salau is working in earnest that these delays occur. I appreciate the ability to keep an eye on this as the amendment goes on and, and the questions from councilmember Rustic. It's like, what are our options? So I will support it. It's probably the, one of the most important agreements we have with the city in front of us today. So we need to get this done, and being a good neighbor to our partners at Salau is probably in our best interest right now to make sure this gets done.
Thank you, Errol. Ms. Colan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
So since I've been on council for six years, this is all we ever talk about is city of North Bend water and Salau water. And so that we've come this far is truly incredible. And I do see Salau out there every day working on it. I've not seen them take a day off, so I don't think it's a lack of them wanting to finish the project, but more of a lack of supply demands or whatnot. So I approve of this motion.
Excellent. Any other comments from council at this time? No? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB twenty-five dash zero seven four, authorizing amendment number one to the agreement for the wholesale supply of water with Salau Water Association. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Motion passes unanimously. Much appreciated. Moving on to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives, why don't we start with Susan tonight? Please. Okey-dokey. I'm gonna bounce to online. Brendan, would you like to say anything tonight?
Thank you, Your Honor. And no, I am a reserved comment. Thank you.
Okay, Mark. Your turn, if you like.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Heather?
I kind of have a long one.
Okay.
So we've been talking a lot about e-bikes, and I finally did some research on it because I think a lot of us don't understand the different types of e-bikes and what's allowed. So e-bikes are allowed on most roads and bike lanes in Washington State. But restrictions vary depending on the class of the e-bike and the type of the path, shared use paths. Class one and class two bikes are generally allowed unless a local ordinance prohibits them, which I've been thinking about. In Washington State, riders of class one and class two bikes can be of any age, but riders of class three e-bikes must be at least sixteen years old. There are no license, registration, or insurance requirements for e-bikes in Washington, but e-bikes are subject to the same rules of the road as a traditional bicycle. Just to clarify the different classes, class one is pedal assist only with a maximum speed of twenty miles per hour. The motor assistance is cut off when the bike reaches twenty miles per hour. Class two offers pedal assist and throttle with a maximum speed of twenty miles per hour. The throttle allows riders to ride without pedaling. Class three is pedal assist only with a maximum speed of twenty-eight miles per hour. The motor assistance is cut off when the bike reaches twenty-eight miles per hour. Speed beyond assisted limit for e-bikes can technically go faster than assisted speed limits, twenty miles per hour for class one and two, and twenty-eight for class three, but any additional speed is gained by the rider power alone or riding downhill. Conversely, there are electric motorbikes and dirt bikes. Dirt bikes are not legal in Washington. They can only be used on private property with permission or designated off-road areas. A driver's license is not required to operate a dirt bike or an e-bike as they are not permitted on public roads. Helmets are required at all times while riding, and riders under eighteen must complete a motorcycle safety course to get a motorcycle endorsement if they are planning to ride street legal motorcycles. That is it. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Heather. I hope it does too. Errol, would you like to add anything tonight?
Yeah, quickly. Snowqualmie Valley Little League, once again, will be hosting Little League All-Star tournaments at Torgerson Park. We have two tournaments this year. They will start on June twenty-eighth and run through approximately June eleventh, uh, June, July thirteenth. So a lot of Little Leaguers at Torgerson from all over the district. It'll be great. Lots of kids in town, come out and check out some baseball. It'll be fun.
Have fun. Okay, Chris?
So the restaurants will be busy, is what you're telling us. Okay. So councilmember Colan and I were on the same page tonight, and so I won't reiterate. Thank you, that was a good summary. I'll just say, our, I think I speak, I certainly speak for myself when I say the concern is about injuries to both pedestrians and drivers and the kids riding these bikes. So that's why we've had a lot of conversation about that at public health and safety. So, and with that, everybody have a great sunny evening.
Alan?
First off, I want to congratulate Amber on becoming our next city administrator. Welcome on board. To go along with the, the themes of public safety, let's hope we do get some rain this week, is what we're looking at. Because as you can see, things start to dry up really quickly, and we start to then focus on wildfires. So if you're a resident and you're near one of the areas, I would encourage you to try to get an assessment from Eastside Fire and Rescue to help you mitigate any issues with wildfire. But this is a time to start taking a look at that. And like I said, let's hope for some rain to make it a little easier and not as dry.
Alan and Bob.
I want to reiterate the selection and confirmation of Amber. Looking forward to transition and looking forward to working with her over the next several weeks. Also wanted to acknowledge Erin DeBerg. On top of all the other work she's been performing for the city, she was out diligently over the last several months earning a certification, I believe, for her continued education in human resource management. So she should be applauded for that as well. So wanted to mention that.
She's at her graduation tonight. And it was a two-year program at the U-Dub. So she has sent me pictures of her next to the husky dog.
Oh, that's, that's fantastic. How exciting. Well, I'll just add, welcome again, Amber, council. I'm thrilled that you're totally approving, and I, I know the, the connections will be made and very well so with staff and all of us going forward into the future. So an exciting time for sure. The city is seeking youth applicants between the ages of sixteen and eighteen for vacancy on the Parks Commission. Application packets and information regarding the position are also available on the city website. Deadline for submittal is June twentieth. Bike North Bend is a plan designed to assess and evaluate our existing cycling landscape to make recommendations for future infrastructure programmatic and policy improvements that could enhance rider confidence and safety. North Bend is looking for community and feedback identifying which bikes, improvements, or programs would have the greatest impact and what concerns residents may have about our existing infrastructure and policies. To take the survey, please visit the news section on the city website. Looking for a simple way to stay, stay up to date on local city news? Well, notify me is a free online subscription tool featured on the city of North Bend's website. The opt-in service allows you to subscribe to a range of topics so that you can pick and choose subjects for notification that you care most about. So the offices will be closed Thursday, June nineteenth, and observance of Juneteenth holiday. That's it for me, and we're gonna now recess the meeting for executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I. The executive session is expected to last thirty minutes, and recording of the meeting will pause at this time. The meeting will resume when we return to council chambers. Thank you so much.